Meeting for. Cam to join.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I guess do we need a formal motion for that to move it or just move it? Great, all right, uh, so be it, well, let's move on to the next one, this is for. Uh, zoning by law amendment, pre-existing non-conforming uses structures and lots, article draft article sixty-one, but article sixty-two, this is Emily Molden.
Mister Chair, can I suggest that you. Hear these two together sixty-two and sixty-three because they are different articles, but they're very much related.
Okay, um, then we will hear also the zoning by law amendment, pre-existing non-conforming uses structures. And lots article sixty-three that was draft sixty-two, Emily Molden is also the sponsor of this. And I would. Ask Emily, if she, yes, she's here, hi Emily, welcome if you care to comment.
Hi Mister Chair, thank you, um, yes, I appreciate it and thanks to the planning board for the opportunity to present on these articles again. I also wanted to thank Leslie and Megan for being in touch and working with me to discuss the potential for some other options that work on the intention of the articles. We had looked for some possible middle ground or some compromise between the two articles. But I didn't feel like we really came up with something that quite achieved that and while I don't. Intend to be repetitive of my previous presentation, I would just like to share some additional points and comments following some. Some more research I've done and a lot of thought and consideration which has ultimately led me back to seeking planning board support on article sixty-two as it was proposed. So it's my understanding that the historical purpose of this pre-existing structures provision. In the subdivision control law was really for scenarios where additional planning board oversight wasn't. Necessary, so for example, allowing conveyances of. A newly created non-conforming lot from one abutter to another, potentially for the purposes of a zoning freeze or for the preliminary purchase of. A lot by an individual who intended to to purchase an adjacent lot that might bring that new law into conformance. The subdivision control law and zoning are intended to be independent of one another. So just because the subdivision control law allows the creation of these non-conforming lots doesn't necessarily mean. That the zoning by law must grant these lots with pre-existing non-conforming rights. So removing the language does not necessarily create a conflict. The pre-existing structure provision. Which allows the creation of these lots that might be non-conforming. It's really a self-inflicted non-conformity, if you will, and the provision is not intended to also convey buildability. But the new language that was added to Nantucket's by law in two thousand twelve has resulted in the creation of. A whole new level of buildability, really, which is. Novel, it's it's not seen in other municipalities, I haven't found another town whose by law grants these pre-existing non-conforming rights. And it really doesn't seem to be consistent with long-term planning efforts. So the purpose of the article really was to not just address. The lack of notification and participation in these redevelopments by abutters and neighborhoods. And to add oversight from a zoning perspective, but also. To address the creation of this. What really ends up being a loophole, enabling an unknown and undefined number of new lots and new dwellings. That haven't really been accounted for in the island's long-term planning. They haven't really been accounted for in build-out calculations or anticipation of infrastructure needs such as water and sewer. They also create potential for significantly more impervious surfaces. And also infill development that is. Causing some, I think questionable impacts around fire and safety, particularly in the in the downtown area. It also creates a lot of pressure on historic structures, I think there's an interesting dynamic right now where. The A and Rs, the in our process for creating these lots requires significant justification that these pre-existing structures are historic and predate nineteen fifty-five. And then you have. The same properties. Petitioning to the HDC that these structures actually lack any historic significance and therefore could be taken down and and put something else in its place. There's also potential, I believe, for this loophole that enables the creation of new market rate lots to. Undermine the covenant program in instances where a lot could have met the criteria for a secondary residential lot. And finally, it's always been my understanding that an overarching goal of the zoning by law. And of our long-term planning process is to strive to create more conformity and to eliminate non-conformity when possible. But extending these pre-existing rights to these newly created non-conforming lot seems to work directly against this. So in conclusion, I guess I would just say that. Conveying this additional buildability to these non-conforming lots. Is not necessary, and while. It does seem to have numerous costs and potential negative ramifications. The only reason that I can see to leave this language in the by law is to continue to convey. This new buildability, this sort of unnecessary. And maybe even inappropriate benefit to those individuals who who choose to take advantage of of this loophole. So I'm asking the planning board for support to make what I believe is an important amendment to the zoning by law and to address the potential ramifications of. This additional buildability, which really isn't necessary and doesn't seem to serve any kind of positive purpose from what from what I can gather. So I'm looking for support on article sixty-two to remove the language that was added in two thousand and twelve. So I'm happy to take thoughts from the board, I can speak to article sixty-three, I'm not sure how you'd like me to proceed Mister Chair.
Okay, uh, let's open up to the board first before we open up to the public and just see if they have any comments. And also staff, if you have any comments from discussions that you've had with Emily, please welcome, welcome to hear those as well. Barry.
Excuse me, I apologize. You know, I'd like to hear from Emily on sixty-three too, since we've combined the two articles. And see, see what. Where we need to track to with things, if you don't mind through you Mister Chair.
Sure, Emily.
Sure, thank you Mister Chair and thank you Mister Director, um, so for article sixty-three and. I think, I don't know how recently you've taken a look at it, but article sixty-three as it was proposed. Essentially, uh, looked at a different avenue, so it left the, um, language. Granting pre-existing non-conforming rights in the by law, but added a provision that required. Um, a special permit and there were a number of triggers that were included, um, which basically were. In the instance that on one of these. Lots created pursuant to this pre-existing structure provision. If there was going to be an expansion of the volume, the area or the height of one of the structures. That that would trigger the need for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Um, one of the things that. Came up for me in my discussions with Leslie and Megan was sort of the realization that it doesn't necessarily specifically address a change in use. And, um, Leslie and Megan had proposed some potential language that would limit. Um, any new dwelling units or ground cover to what would previously have been allowed on the. Greater lot before it had been divided. Um, and I certainly appreciated that type of incorporation. Um, I actually had sent a note back to staff and after thinking about it. A little bit more was actually interested in. Um, the planning board's feedback if article sixty-two did not go forward, which would be my preference of. Addressing that by also adding a a special permit. Finding criteria. That would prevent, um, an increase in the number of dwellings on the newly created lots, so that in other words. If a a new non-conforming lot were created with the pre-existing structures provision that had included. A garage apartment or cottage, then. Uh, it could be redeveloped with a dwelling unit on it, but if it had just been, say, a shed or a garage, then it couldn't necessarily be redeveloped with a new dwelling unit. Um, and. I hadn't had an opportunity to go back and forth with staff on that concept or to confirm whether. Um, that would still be within the original scope of that article. Um, but that was sort of my thinking on article sixty-three. That I actually would like to add another element that addresses the change of use of increasing more dwelling units where they hadn't previously existed.
Thank you Emily. Uh, what members?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mister, yeah, yeah, Mister Chairman, um, Leslie, I don't know how. How you want to get into this. But I'd like to just. Add a few things to what Emily's saying and sort of give her some things to think about. And I know that you guys are, you know. Understand this stuff, um. But for example, Emily, and this is, this, this issue is. You gotta remember, this is in the ROH, yes, there's been a handful. There was one of Vesp, Vespur Lane. Um, above, I don't know, six years ago, so something like that. And there, you know, there's a handful floating around out there, but let's, this is really in town, okay? We reduced ground cover by ten percent. Three years ago, I believe. From fifty to forty. No shots were fired, nobody came to the microphone. It happened by itself. But that needs to be said, okay? The, look at the funeral home. What that is now versus what it was. Nobody like, you know, thousands of vehicles that drive by that place every day and nobody even remembers it. That was forty-one eighty-one L, it's a beautiful home. With a, with a, a, a very small lot, no lawn mowers, no weed whackers, no. Motorized leaf blowers, it's just a, a, a house. That could have been there two hundred years ago, you know what I mean? You look up at the one across from the, um. A recent one behind the old jail, Emily, you know, on the main street side of the old jail, it's like on the other side of it, that's. Bert Johnson, the other Bert Johnson's old property. That got sliced up through the forty-one eighty-one L and they're all existing dwellings. You know, owned by different people. I'm assuming. Uh, or family members, a lot of times the forty-one eighty-one L allows people to. Keep their land. That they've had. In some cases, it's not like a subdivision that's creating double the density or something. So I think. I would personally appreciate if staff could. Put together. A list of the more recent. Pride, you know, the recent approvals, see what the results have been. You know, on the ground with ground cover with additional. Units being added, you know, dwellings, I do agree with your point about. Under a certain size lot. Say three, under three thousand square feet, let's just throw that out there as a number. That maybe there should be a limit on what can go there beyond one dwelling, for example. I think that's an open, that's a good starting point. Um, what we dealt with with thirty-nine Union Street. Is a great example of. If we didn't, if we don't come up with a way, and we have an article about this. For a, 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 a home that's already constructed that has two. Dwellings and, you know, on in one lot, that person is forced to sell their house. I can tell you that you, I'm sure that you wouldn't have approved us, approving a covenant in that front yard with that tree, okay? So like, that's not really an answer, the second, uh, second, you know, a covenant in the ROH district, that's a complicated conversation right there. I mean. This is, it's a different animal in town. And we have to look at it with a different lens than we do other areas, so I, I'm glad you've. Actually brought this up. Even if I don't agree with it completely, I'm, I think it's a topic that needs to be discussed. And I think the truth needs to come out as far as what actually happens after. This process takes place in most of the cases. So Emily, thank you very much for doing this and working with staff. And I hope that we can come to some kind of an article that we can all agree on, it's something, but you know. For future time. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to call on Dave before Barry because he always lets people go before him anyway, so Dave, go ahead.
I mean, I, listen, I think Nat said it fairly well, I, I think that there is something here and I think that, um. You know, I like the, I like the, um. Thought of maybe a special permit, but, um, I think that maybe if Emily's willing to work with staff some more and figure this out, maybe we could get it in the special town meeting in the fall. Might be a better call, um. I, I'm just not comfortable with them the way they are right now. Um, but I, I'm not saying that I wouldn't be with some, some, some small changes, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go directly to Leslie before the other members, go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you, Mister Chairman, and I want to thank Emily for, you know, taking some time to work with Megan and me on her articles. Unfortunately, we just didn't have enough time to give it the level of review that I think it really deserved. And she had some good concepts in here, but I agree with what the board is saying that these need more time and they need to be. You know, thought out a little bit more and we need to do a little bit more research. And, you know, I would encourage you to make a motion to take no action, but to include a comment. As to why, and we can talk about that later, uh, at the end of the meeting, but. Um, you know, I just want to, you know, say to Emily that there's a lot of citizen articles that have come through. Throughout the years that have really great concepts, but they're just not ready. For that particular town meeting and they're successful when we take the time to really work on them, so I would, I hope that she would agree to that.
Okay, thank you Leslie, um, Joe, Barry, is there something new that you want to add or? Are you satisfied with? Before I open it up, we still have to, this is a, a public hearing.
Now Leslie just kind of took my thunder, just could we work on a little bit more? You know, I do agree if we could do this as a special permit, I think would be really smart, but. I think that Emily's bringing something. Uh, that really needs, we need this, but it needs to be, uh, well-written to make sure that it doesn't come back to bite us later on.
Yeah, Barry.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that concept as well too, um, the, I mean, there's a few areas of concern as well, especially like with sixty-two where there, there is a potential here for conflict with state law. As well that I think we need to clear up and address very significantly, there's also a fair amount of overlap that begins to. Occur between the planning board. And the HDC with this, and there may be some ways that I think we need to clean it up, it's a good start, but. Right now, I think the best thing to do is to take two articles, uh, put them to bed. Come back maybe for special, as we said, come back to special town meeting and have some time to really work out the nuts and bolts of this thing. Um, so that we, we get it as good as we possibly can at this point. Uh, my suggestion will be to probably, um. Instead of take no action is, is to do it not to adopt, it's a lot cleaner, it makes the public understand that we're just not ready for it yet, it's not floating out there. Um, and, and to me that, that you, you really want to just give the public yes and no answer, not a definitive maybe. With that, so anyways, thanks, thanks, I appreciate the time and, uh, I'll be curious to see what else occurs.
Thank you Barry, I'm just going to, uh, a- agree with the comments we made with the board, uh, I think it's really good that, um, this is brought to our attention. Um, it's a lot to, that we can work on and work out, um, language, but to rush it. And miss out to come back and open up maybe potential loopholes and things, like to do it and get it done right the first time, um, really appreciate Emily bringing this to us. Um, and I think, uh, it definitely has merits to work on in the future and and get it right. Uh, I would like to open it up to the, the general public, uh, to see if there's anybody out there that has a comment. And Meg would rely on you.
I'm sorry.
Hello, Stephanie? Yes.
I just, I wanted to quickly say that I agree with. The article sixty-two approach, just because it's unclear to me what the intent. Of the technical amendment that was added in two thousand and twelve was. Uh, this forty-one eighty-one L was enforceable before and after the amendment, and I just wanted to clarify that I. Don't think this is. Going to remove any of the ability to enforce forty-one, forty-one eighty-one L or it's not eliminating forty-one eighty-one L, it's. Eliminating a way to exploit. Forty-one eighty-one L, and I think. Sub, the subdivision control law is not intended to encroach upon the authority of. The zoning board to, or prevent them from enforcing a town's zoning bylaws. It instead, it's a lot, it sets up a dual approval requirement where there's. Approval not required by the planning board or the subdivision itself. But then. Really, you'd have to secretly from the zoning board for any zoning non-conformities, and I think that, uh. Should be, they're distinctly enforceable, so I, I don't think there's a conflict here with the state law with forty-one eighty-one L.
Thank you Stephanie. Meg, is there anyone else in the? Public that has their hand raised?
So this Zoom is set up a little bit differently than ones in the past, everyone should be on the Brady Bunch screen here. Um, so if you are a member of the public attending, please use your raise your hand function so that we could. More easily identify you because there are quite a few screens. Um, screens here, so I don't see any public members, but I do see Joe.
Yes. Thank you, uh, I see Emily and Joe, but I'll take Joe first, thank you.
Uh, thank you Mister Chair, so Nat, just to clarify, were you asking that past? Uh, subdivisions you're looking for or past and future possible forty-one eighty-one Ls? Because I, I mean, I think it'd be kind of nice where I think that sometimes it works, I think that Lewis, uh, funeral home. Location, I think worked well, but, but there may be some other lots that really need to be. You know, looked at carefully, so I'm just curious if, if you're asking the staff.
Yeah. Okay, I was, I was asking, well, first of all, Joe, yeah, for clarification, sorry, I zoomed right through there. There, there's been a lot of these in the last like three years, okay, I mean, that's. You know, um. But on the other side of the coin, that's partially due to. Uh. You know. Generational landowner issues. I mean, we, we just helped someone up on Cliff Road, we don't even probably realize what we did, twenty-four Cliff. They had this massive lot in ROH that. And we wanted to sell it. And they came up with a way to. You know. Uh, sell pieces of their land to their abutters, so they, so they could keep, so one of the families could keep it, I mean, there's so many different things. Because of the value of land here. Creates these problems and they're all sort of separate. Different. Type problems and who with Emily is look at all the ones that we've done. I mean, I don't mean to say. Since the last fifteen years, I'm just saying, pick out some that are, that stand out. Uh, I, I'm just taking the ones out of my head, that one up on across from. Um. Uh, on Main Street on the left there. Uh. Across from Sandy Craig's old property, you know where that is, Joe, there's like a whole bunch of small little houses in there, but driveway. And that got sliced up, I think into four lots, but they're all with buildings on them.
Correct.
And there are, you know, so there's some positive. Outcomes. For, you know, old property owners that want to stay but can't keep everything. Or stuff like that, and it's kind of important, and I think we need to really look at this before we. Make any drastic changes. Um, I do, like I said, I do agree that when a lot is a certain size. That, you know, under five thousand, obviously, but we have to come up with whatever that size we think is right, there should be some sort of limitation on what can happen on that lot, I agree with that. But. We gotta, we gotta put this on paper, this has to be, it has to be numbers and statistics to show this because we, we have reduced ground cover downtown. And that was something that staff worked on that was some pushback behind the scenes about that. Of what the ground cover really was in town and it's in the, in the ROH part, and it's a little less than what some thought, so. You know, I think these things all play a role in this, was in the end, it's about ground cover, it's not about. Lot sizes, it's about. Is, 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 Emily said, you know, impervious and all that, but it is ground cover, one way or the other. So I think that. That that, it, it overall, it doesn't really add much, you know what I mean, so we need to look at that and also too. Joe, as you know, there's a lot of big lots and some weird places that people don't realize, like on India Street. Backing up to Rose Lane, there's some huge lots back there. And up on Cliff Road. That. You know, are gonna get developed. At some point by right. So on one hand, we have. These unusual areas that can have large dwellings built, and then we have these other areas with these little clusters of dwellings on small lots. Three fifty-five or whatever that we, that, that fall into this, it, it's sort of a. You have double-edged sword stuff in the ROH district, so. I just think we need to really look at this before we act on it at the moment, and I think that we're. Maybe closer than we think, but I don't think we should act on it now. Because this is somewhat of a new. Change. That's how I see it at the moment, anyway.
Thanks Nat, uh, Emily.
Thank you Mister Chair and, um, thanks to the, to the planning board members for those comments, um, I do remember, I think, when the ground cover was reduced downtown. Nat, that might have been the town meeting where I helped inform, um, Dr. Butterworth what the purpose of the article was because he had called it not realizing, um, what the intention actually was, but. Um, anyway, yeah, I thank you all for those comments, I guess, um. In general, it's a little hard for me to understand what the real. Downside would be of removing this language that has conveyed these additional rights that have such a long list of potential negative ramifications. Um, when it, there really aren't. A lot of benefits to it other than the, um. Some costs to the, to the community and the island, but I hear the comments certainly and, um. I guess I'm assuming then that the proposal would be on both articles for the time being, I just wanted to confirm that as well, thank you.
Thanks Emily, uh, we are taking these as, as one, hearing them both, um, and. Uh, uh, again, you're not, not hearing a negative from the, from the board. Uh, we're seeing that there's a willingness to work with you in the future and work out language and cooperate with the staff. Um, so I, I think you're hearing a positive from everyone, um, I don't think, from what I'm hearing, everyone is comfortable to press on right now. Uh, that being said, uh, it is a citizen petition, so obviously you'd still be able to make a, uh, presentation at annual town meeting. Uh, but maybe with the cooperation, working with staff, we can hammer out the language. And get it to a point where not only do you feel comfortable, it's not rushed and in a position where everyone's happy, um. So if we can maybe look towards, uh, even, you know, the special town meeting in the fall, uh, that. Would be something that I'm hearing from the board that we'd be willing to work with you as, as far as that can, that's concerned, but, um. I see that Joe, Joe's hands raised, so Joe.
Yeah, through you Mister Chair, uh, Emily, I'd like to give a, you know. Say that we're gonna adopt it, then say, take no action. I think if you press forward for this town meeting, I think you'd have a little bit harder battle. Um, and I think the more we can talk about this, the better, so I'm not. Saying push it off too long, but just the next special town meeting would be great, and I think working with staff, getting the information that Nat's requested. Really going through that, work on the language. You know, a couple of different lots, I know this one right across from me. That worked out really well and there's three local families in there and I love that, that's, that's great, and it goes to what Nat's saying, but I do. Know there's one on Main Street that's been like quite contentious, so, you know, I'm just, I just want to go through each one of them and really look at them before, you know, press on or. Or make, press for a vote, thank you.
Alright, thanks Joe. If anybody else, Meg, do you see?
Can I ask, can I ask Leslie a question?
Go ahead Nat.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just want to ask Leslie a, kind of a staff sort of technical question. Wherever she went, Leslie, can we, how much can we do on our own beyond? Subdivision control law and stuff, and we. Like, we don't want to make this turn into like jumping through lots of hoops every time this happens, okay, but at the same time. like, we don't want to make this turn into like jumping through lots of hoops every time this happens, okay? But at the same time, getting some kind of control, you know, for this in certain applications, depending upon how big the lots are gonna be, the proposals. Maybe sometimes this should be two lots instead of three or something like that. Because moving houses is not impossible, you know, and that's depending on the, the way they were built and so forth, but with, so can I, just how far can we go adjusting this to Nantucket? Do we have a limitless amount of uh, authority to do that?
So, I mean, so through the local zoning bylaw, you can place all kinds of standards on, you know, what happens after these lots are created. So the state law through forty one eighty one L allows their creation. But your local zoning bylaw can either, like in Article sixty two, require a variance for anything that happens once the forty one eighty one L is signed, or you can put criteria in. Uh, right now, we don't have any criteria except that they're granted preexisting nonconforming status. And, you know, I do agree with Emily that, you know, that could be tightened up a lot, but we need more time to talk about, you know, what those standards might be, what the restrictions might be and how that's dealt with. Is it dealt with through a special permit or is it allowed by right? Or is it variance? So you have a lot of latitude uh, to create something new in the bylaw, but we need more time to develop that and to do the research.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, because, because we've done that, like for example, with the secondary lot. How many changes have we made since that came in? A lot of changes. We could, because time helped us learn what the problems were. The interior lot line stuff. Um, the separation, I mean, there's been, there's been a bunch of stuff that was really uh, onerous on the person we're trying to help create a year round house, you know, here we are, we're trying to do something and making it harder. So in this case, I think we need to have that same kind of an approach. We're making sure we don't, you know, make it worse, but make it better. So, you know, and I agree with what you said about tightening things up. I just think we need to just, you know, get, get it right. Because this is something that's sort of unseen. This isn't like something that's out and all over the island that everyone sees. This is like, you don't notice any of this stuff because you're driving in town and you just can't, you don't see it. So, thank you for all your work, you know, all your help. And Emily, thank you for bringing this up. It can be, you know, agree to disagree, but we'll get to the, to the end on this. Because I think that you, this definitely, you see staff agrees with you. It's just that we have to come up with something that makes sense. So we don't make more problems. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nat. I don't see any hands raised, but I would ask for assistance from Meg if you see someone else. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move, sir. Motion's been made to close by Barry, seconded by Joe. Roll call, Barry.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Uh, Chair votes aye.
Mister Chairman, just confirm you're closing the public hearing on Articles sixty.
Yes, sixty two and sixty three. Yes, we heard them together. We'll close them together. Thank you. And Barry?
Yep, so I'm gonna make a motion at this point. See, there's no further discussion from the board, I can see. Um, I'd like to make a motion at this point that we take a uh, motion not to adopt for Articles sixty two and sixty three.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, we have to also identify, um, this is a quantum of vote of two thirds for.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I add to that motion? Leslie, can we add some language to that? Future work. No, I mean, I'm, okay, Barry, through staff to Barry, whatever, to add some language for the reasoning, so we just don't say take no, uh, not to adopt, but a bang. So there's a little more to it than that, because this is okay.
Thank you, Nat. And Barry, if you're okay with that amendment to your.
I did, that was exactly where I was gonna track to after we disposed of things here, because that's, that would be appropriate. Put something in the comment section for the future. So you have, you have a, you need a.
We have a motion with the comment and the two thirds quantum vote. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Joe. Roll call, Barry.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, thank you, Emily.
Uh, thank you.
Look forward to working with you in the future on this. Uh, moving, moving on, we are going to zoning article proposed by planning board. Uh, this is for the, I believe the zoning bylaw amendment definition for timeshare and timeshare, time interval ownership dwelling. Uh, is that correct?
Uh, Mister Chair, we put this in to deal with a potential amendment to add something about fractional ownership. Um, we've talked with town council, we've discussed this internally, and we think this article at this time is premature. It may address things that we don't mean it to address. And it also is somewhat tied to the short term rental discussion. So we think this should just be put off um, for the special town meeting or a future town meeting or, you know.
Okay. Um, and this would also require a quantum vote of two thirds.
Yes.
I'm going to open up for the board and a comment on that from staff before we open up to the public. Seeing none, I will open it up to the public if there's anyone that wants to comment on that. And thank you for your patience. All I know, this is generally not the format that we're usually dealing with, so I'm taking a little time to run up and down the list.
I'm not seeing anyone with a hand raised.
Okay, with that, entertaining motion to close.
So move, sir.
Uh, motion's been made to close by Barry, seconded by Dave. Roll call, Barry.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Nat? Joe?
Aye, sorry about that.
That's alright, Chair votes aye. Okay, uh, now onto the motion. Uh, staff has recommended put off until the uh, special town meeting, uh, with a vote of two thirds.
Yeah, Mister Chairman.
Yes, Barry.
I'll, I'll make a motion at this point. We to uh, take not to adopt quantum of two thirds vote and we can certainly express that thought in the comment section when we get to it from staff.
Okay.
I'll second Barry's motion.
Okay, motion has been made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Roll call, Barry.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Uh, moving on, uh, this was a zoning map amendment. Uh, RC two to R, R five or C tech, uh, this is for the Appleton Road. Uh, Meg or Leslie, would you care to open up that?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, this includes three parcels, twenty twenty two, twenty four, Appleton Road. Uh, we had proposed to rezone those to R five or C tech. Um, this needs a little bit more time, so I would ask that you all take a, a vote to take no action.
Okay. Board members' discussion?
Good. Well.
Barry?
Yeah, just through you to Leslie.
Hmm?
Is it that he feels that we need to go to another town meeting to be able to address this or or is it something that can be cleaned up in the short run of things?
I think this needs to go to a different town meeting.
Alright, um, I'm, I'm probably just gonna say to you, Leslie, that I'll do the same thing. So it's very clear to the public. Um, as opposed to the mid road here of, of take no action. But yeah, okay, if we need more time, I, I, I do want to say though, I'm thr- I was thrilled to see these articles coming through, so as a group, um, they've been hanging out there for a while and I'm just so thrilled with the forward momentum of these things. So, thank you.
So Barry, if I, you know, just declares you're looking to potentially uh, n- make a motion not to adopt, we're, we're still opening up to public, but that was what you had just stated.
That, may I, to you?
Sure.
Yeah, no, I, I have kind of learnt over time here at this point is that when you communicate with the public, I think it's important to be very crystal and clear as either a definitive yes or a definitive no. Maybes can be somewhat confusing in terms of doing that. So when we say not to adopt, I think there's no mistake about what that means, whereas motion to take no action, uh, what do you mean? You know, so that, that's all. And like I said, we can certainly, one of the things I found very powerful is that when we do tell the public we're saying no, that in the comment section, that's where we really get to expound upon things and, and clarify the situation.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Any other board members before I open it? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Oh, I see Anne. And Wes?
Yes, um, I'm automatically on, right?
You are on now.
Thanks. Um, just as a matter of interest for me and education, um, I'm wondering if, um, even for this one, uh, which is going to be postponed or otherwise dealt with, um, you could quickly put up the map and just give a very brief um, explanation of why the article is being proposed. Um, part, sometimes I know it has to do with a general shift toward um, different kinds of uh, treatment of, of properties. But it would be very helpful just to have a very brief overview of the reason, um, and also to see it on the map. I mean, I know where Appleton Road is and most of these other places, but it's, the visual is super helpful.
Yeah, definitely. And Meg, if you have that ability, um, thank you, Anne. Sometimes the color codes that we have in the different zoning help to um, identify things, but ul- ultimately, uh, the, the RC two, as you probably know, we've been phasing out over many years. And uh, that's probably the, the general basis for this. Uh, but if you'll look, we're trying to take um, properties and, and, and areas um, as, as best we can in groups, um. So, if you all see that, the highlighted red, that's what we're looking at. Presently, it's in the RC two.
So, so Mister Chair, there's, there's three parcels included in this article. Um, is part of a, an overall plan for Salrose, Nobbska and what's left on Appleton Road to phase those out of the RC two zoning district, which is part of the two thousand nine master plan. And we're down to really the end here on um, the areas that are still in RC two. So all along, the planning board has tried to work with property owners to um, rezone the properties to something that they, you know, can agree with and can work with. And they've also put off articles when there is a situation where a particular property owner has plans that just can't be worked around with the rezoning. And in this case, one of the owners came to me, he had imminent plans for his property. Well, it just couldn't be accommodated with a preliminary plan because the land's not big enough. It couldn't work with a perimeter plan, so there were really no options for him. So I talked with him on the phone and said that I would suggest to you all that we put it off to give him a little bit more time. And he said he's, you know, amenable to his zoning change in the future, but right now it would not work. And, and that's something that the board has always been considerate of. So that's why I suggested that we put this off for a future town meeting.
Thank you, Leslie. Anne, does that answer your question or satisfy your concern?
Uh, yes, uh, very much so. Just as I said, it's really more um, a, a very um, brief um, explanation to help understand, help us understand a little bit, not only where it is, but uh, the thinking behind it.
Thank you, Anne. And, and as Leslie said, it really was not just the, the one article. There were a combination of articles between uh, um, Salrose, Appleton, and also of uh, Nobbska that encompassed that entire area there. We just highlighted their red portion to show you what we're uh, specifically talking about, talking about in this uh, in this article for Appleton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the general public?
I'm not seeing anyone.
I am not as well. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion from the board to close.
So move, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to close by Barry, seconded by Dave. Roll call, Barry.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Uh, Chair votes aye. And now on to the motion.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Barry.
I'll make a motion not to adopt a requirement of two thirds quantum vote. And again, there'll be a notation from staff as a comment. And this is if so needed.
Okay, um, is there a second? A motion made by Barry, seconded by Nat. Roll call, Barry.
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, we are looking at the zoning map amendment, RC two or uh, to R five or C tech. This is Nobbska Way. I believe we are in agreement uh, to uh, suggest it go to an R five. Is that correct, Leslie?
Yes, um, Mister Chair, we are proposing R five. Um, the neighborhood, um, at previous times when this has been proposed, said that they wanted to keep the residential character of their neighborhood and the R five district would do that. I've talked with two property owners that um, will be filing a preliminary plan ahead of the meeting. Um, that does give them an opportunity to protect their rights under RC two, unlike in the previous article where the person didn't have the opportunity. And um, so we would recommend R five. Again, this is implementation of the two thousand nine master plan to phase out the RC two district.
Thank you. Uh, board members, any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. I see, um, there's a hand raised, Julie. And if Julie could identify herself and her address. Uh, you're on mute, move.
Hi, it's uh, Carl Sherland and Julie Fitzgerald, uh, own twenty four Appleton Road and three Nobbska Way. Um, you know, with potentially the change for Appleton Road, we'd also like to keep three Nobbska as part of that. And if it's rather than going to um, R five to go to a C tech for three, so the two properties could stay together and be zoned together consistently. And three is already a commercial use. We, you know, the current building originally was a house, but now it's used for office purposes and we have a permit for it to be used as an office. So we'd like to continue to have that opportunity and have that commercial use.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Um, Leslie, do do you have a comment on that?
Um, I did speak with Julie earlier today, so Julie, thanks for talking with me about this article. Um, the Fitzgerald Sherland lot is oversized. And they do have an opportunity to file a preliminary plan prior to the vote of town meeting to preserve their rights. So I would, you know, request that the board move ahead with the rezoning. We've discussed it in this area several times and I think it's time for you all to move ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Julie, your hands raised?
No, sorry. But I, I guess we do want to respond because the property that's basically across the street from us is the property that's at, um, you know, twenty and twenty two Appleton Road and that is a pretty um, dense commercial use, which is what we're directly opposite and affected by. So again, I feel like it's more appropriate for three Nobbska to stay part of the C tech zoning if that's where it's going. Yes, do we have protection if we file a plan? Yes, but we would still rather have it, um, you know, being in a C tech zone, so it's consistent with the two lots.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, board members? Um, J- I for one, uh, I my only concern is without, with, with pulling this, it, it's an endless cycle. Um, there is a to preserve this and, and protect it um, with a filing and without. To preserve this and and protect it, um, with a filing and without that, um, we're really. Creating an endless possibility by removing it and coming about it in the in the following years. Um, if there was going to be a plan or a potential for a plan, the filing can take place right now. Um, so my inclination would be to put this, uh, as we first designed it, uh, into the R five. And and move ahead with it, knowing that before annual town meeting, um, there is a potential to to file to protect. Nat, are you just, uh?
I just, I I just. I'm, I'm, I'm audible sign because of. What I thought would could happen, you know, five years ago when we got down to the last few lots. Of RC two, it would turn into. What's wrong with RC two? Um, what can happen under RC two is is a scary thing. And that's, that's the hard part. Now, we've already. You know. Got rid of so much of it. And now we're down to these little pieces and we've been trying to deal with this for a while and I. Share your concern, John. That's what I'm. Thinking.
Barry?
Yeah, so I'm. I'm a little confused by that because I thought that, um. There was going to be a pre-plan file for this. We was going to go to R five and then consequently as well. Um, the C tech article, which we just heard, which, um, is going to be coming back. And there's no unearthly reason that at that juncture, Megan, Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong here, that that we can't. Put that in at that juncture. Am I correct?
It's twenty three hours.
Uh, oh, you're talking about. Barry, you're talking about the other lot that Julie brought up.
Yeah, I I I am. I'm not sure I under- I'm not sure I understand. What else is is problematic in this, but maybe I'm not maybe seeing something. Go ahead. So in effect, yeah.
Go ahead, Leslie.
So, so Mister Chairman, the the other lot that the Fitzgerald's own, which was in in Sherlin, excuse me, um, at the corner. That's the one that was in the other article that we removed that I think should eventually go to C tech. Um, but the article, excuse me, the lot. On Knobscot. While it does have a commercial permit for an office. The lot directly across the street is residential. The one next to that is residential. The rest of those are primarily residential and then the rest of the street is already in R five. So. Taking their lot out. Would create a potential. You know, heavy commercial use in, uh, on a street that's primarily residential. So that's why I'm recommending that you all leave that in. And if they want to file a pre-plan, they can do that. As long as it's prior to the vote of town meeting.
Does that satisfy your question, Barry? Okay. Um, I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone would like to comment a question.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Uh, no, I'm not. So not seeing anyone. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go move, Mister Chair.
Motion, motions were made to close by Joe, uh, second by Barry. Roll call, Joe.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Now on to the motion.
Mister Chair, I believe this is a fifty percent vote.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Uh, we'll make that in the motion as a quantum vote of fifty percent. And the suggestion from staff would be to move these into R five. Okay. Barry's laughing, waiting for.
I I've been doing, I've been doing, I've been doing this for a good part. That just was opening it for someone else. You know, for a little change of venue, that's all. But, uh, if if. Yes, indeed. Just like sometimes I'll sit and wait toward the end of things. Excuse me, I'll, oh. Oh, good golly. Excuse me, I get chucked up. On this, um, I'll make a motion at this point is that we move ahead with the, uh, change over to the R five district fifty percent. Of the, um. Required fifty percent quantum. Vote. Of doing this.
Okay, is there a second?
Our second would be consistent with Barry.
Okay. Motion made by Barry, second by Joe. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Uh, moving on, this is the zoning map amendment, um, or one to R five, C N or and C M I. Uh, Pleasant Street, Kimberly Way, Williams Lane, Cherry Street, Bear Street, and Madison Court, um. I think if I'm not mistaken, this is a re-advertising and it requires a quantum vote of fifty percent. Uh, Leslie or Meg?
Uh, if I think if Megan could share the map, that would be really helpful.
Thank you.
All right, so this article, uh, a change from R one to a combination of R five, C N and C M I. Would further implementation of the two thousand nine master plan, which identified a phase out of the R one district. So the majority that you see outlined in red would go to the R five zoning district. A small portion directly across in the Boys and Girls Club. Would go to the commercial neighborhood district. And then a small portion at the AC outlined in green would go to commercial mid-island. So this was a partnership between, uh, us trying to phase out the R one and a request from the hospital. So they could create some additional housing. So I would, uh, ask that you support this article.
Thank you. Dave?
Uh, through you to Leslie. Leslie, are we, um. Are we dividing a lot here into two different zoning districts?
We are, but I anticipate a plan coming forward to fix that.
Oh, from N I R?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that that answers my question. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Dave. Any other board members?
Uh, this has been going on a while, this, this little area. So it looks like it looks good. Is everybody in agreement with this? Leslie, that you got that little. Sort of half commercial area of the N I R stuff and. Those odd uses that have been going on for years there. So I'm assuming that that's all all set here.
It would fix some non-conformities, yes, but I don't know that that's their long-term plan to continue that. I'm I'm not sure about that.
Yeah. But it cleans up the existing problems that we have now. So. All right.
All right, I'll open it up to the general public. I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, Barry?
Yeah, hey, thank you. You're right in the same page with me. I'm not really seeing anyone either at this point. So I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Barry, second by Nat. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Now on to the motion.
Mister Chair, this is also a fifty percent quantum vote.
Yes, thank you, Leslie. Barry?
So I'll make a motion at this point that we adopt changes as submitted at this point, um, with the requirement of fifty percent quantum vote.
Second.
Motion been made by Barry, second by Nat. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. All right, thank you very much. Moving on. Zoning map amendment, RC two to R twenty and lug three to. And and lug three, ninety one and ninety five Maya Comet have. Um, Leslie, is there a note here for that? Is this a? Um, just a quantum vote of two thirds or is this a fifty percent?
This is a fifty, uh, excuse me, this is a two thirds.
A two thirds, okay.
Two thirds. And, um, most of this land is now owned by the land bank. It was recently acquired, private property owner. Um, that same owner has retained a portion of the property. That's the portion that would go to R twenty. The land bank portion would go to L U G three. Um, this again is part of the master plan phase out to remove or reduce the RC two zoning district. And I would ask that you give this a positive motion.
Hey, thank you. Board members? I'll open it up to the, uh, general public.
Dave's got us here.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
Yeah, just again through you. To Leslie, so that this is how what we're how we're dealing with our open space now is is. Changing it to L U G three, correct?
It is. We have proposed an open space zoning district several times, but have not received support from that, from the various organizations that would be affected. So L U G three is the way we're dealing with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else from the general public?
Motion to close the public hearing, sir.
Thank you, Barry. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made to close by Barry, second by Dave. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Uh, now on to motions.
Make a motion at this point that we adopt the article as submitted with the requirement of fifty percent quantum vote. Uh, two thirds, two third, two thirds, my apologies.
Second.
Okay, motions were made by Barry, second by Dave. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Uh, now we will be moving back to. Um, this was a re-advertising for the zoning amendment, uh, to amend the definition of swimming pool, um, Cam Sutton. And.
She's not here, um. I texted her, I sent her the link yesterday. I I don't know.
Okay, Barry, your hands raised?
Yeah, through you to staff at this point. How we, I think the the meeting on the thirteenth is our last. Meeting where we can do adopting articles at this point. How are we set for that?
We have a very long agenda on Monday. And you have to adopt all of your comments and all of your motions on Monday, and I have to get those to the FinCom first thing Tuesday morning.
No, I know that, yeah.
You know, I I think we. You know, as Megan said, uh. Made it very clear to Ms. Sutton that we would be discussing this tonight. She was aware of it. And I, in the interest of time, would ask that you go ahead and discuss the article tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, we we still have public, um, comment and also. I'll just remind everyone, uh, we've stated this, it is a citizen petition warrant article, so. It does have the ability to be opened up and discussed, uh, on the town floor at the annual town meeting. So, um, I would, unless there's a another comment or question from the board. I would like to open it up to the, uh, public.
I'm not seeing anybody with a hand raised.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion then at this point that we, uh, close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Barry, second by Joe. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Uh, now on to the merits. Uh, and this is going to require a quantum vote of two thirds.
Mister Chairman.
We haven't, we haven't. Talk, did we talk about this? We didn't talk about this in previous meetings, have we? Oh, sorry.
We did, we did.
But, yes, we did.
This is.
I thought, I I I thought we did. I remember that. Barry, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, Mister Chair, I think I must have known, I guess I'll note that you did have a substantial discussion about this. At your last meeting with, which was a public hearing, um. And and was open to the public. So I think. You know, it might be good for someone to just just point out maybe in the motion or in a comment that you did have a significant discussion leading up to this meeting.
Okay, we'll make that in the motion. Thank you, Leslie.
Yeah, Mister Iverson's got his hand raised now.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I just, uh. I mean, listen, I supported the the planning board's article to, um. To to change the, uh, minimum lot size to seven seventy five hundred feet. I I clearly am not a favor of a lot of pools in small, in small zoning districts. But, um, I just, I have a lot of concerns about this article, I, you know, um. Ms. Sutton claimed in her letter and I, and I. I shouldn't say claim, said in her letter because I do believe her that that this isn't an effort to. Um, restrict people's ability to build pools, but I I unfortunately think that that is exactly what will happen here, whether that's her. Intention or not, for, so for for that reason, I have a real hard time giving this one a positive recommendation.
Thanks, Dave. Joe?
Yeah, I agree with Dave and I think we said it in the last meeting where this is really going to take, you know. It's going to take way too much of, you know, property rights and stuff like that, so I'm not really in favor of this. And we did ask her to go get some more information and she. Did a valiant effort. Um, but I don't think it really. Incidentally, my questions or or change my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And just for the record, we were, um, given a, uh, substantial, fairly lengthy letter from. Um, the sponsor, uh, Campbell Sutton, uh, also with some statistics, uh. I just wanted to note that we did receive it. Uh, I I for one reviewed everything and read through the letter. Um, I'm hoping my board members did as well. Uh, so with that, I just wanted to make that comment, uh, but. So we've had discussions in the past. We've reviewed, uh, recent updates and letters and statistics if, uh. If the board is inclined, then I would entertain a motion at this point. Barry?
And Mister Chairman will make a motion not to adopt, uh, two thirds quantum vote recorded.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Barry, second by Dave. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. All right, uh, moving on, I think we are at public comment. And anything, uh, for items not listed on the agenda, I would. Look for the general public. I see Anne's hand is raised. Yes, Anne, welcome back.
Thank you, um. I sent a letter which Megan forwarded to you, Mister Chair, and to, uh, Dave, Mister Chair, Vice Chair. Um, asking about the format for these meetings. Um, it's usually in a webinar format, which doesn't allow us to see other participants and does not allow. Video for anything other than, um, named panelists. And, um. It's interesting to have this format tonight, which is, um, a deviation from the normal. Rule, which I find a lot more amenable, uh, in terms of participation, access, uh, et cetera, et cetera. I haven't had a response to my, uh, my, my query. And so I was wondering if you were in a position to respond now, or, um, should I? Continue to wait for a written response?
Um, without getting into a lengthy dialogue, Anne, I think, uh, you'll have to wait. Only because I think there's still, um, things that are being discussed at the state. Only because I think there's still um things that are being discussed at the state level that we're still waiting for information to come in and there's. Uh there's advertising, obviously, issues and we'll see what plays out, but. Um we're um we're waiting for more information as well as you. So I don't want to really comment or make any. Kind of decisions based on uh until we get more information, but you know, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you.
If if I may. Mister Chair.
Dave, if you would like, I'm I'm. Just. Give you a little latitude because uh this isn't generally made for a dialogue between comment. This is a public uh comment and not necessarily.
All all I'm doing is apologizing to Anne because in all honesty, I have not seen the email and invited to slip by me. I'm traveling, so. I apologize and I will make an effort to find that email um this evening or tomorrow.
I I did see the email and it may have been just addressed to the chair. Um maybe you weren't included, but. We'll make sure that you get that as well, Dave. Thank you. Okay. With that, uh other business, uh I don't see any other hands raised for a public comment, so. Moving on, uh we have a planning board regular meeting on March thirteenth, four o'clock uh via Zoom. And then we have a planning board joint meeting with the select board and FinCom on March twentieth, uh four P M via Zoom. Uh thank you very much. Uh thank you all for attending and thank you staff. Uh last comment, uh go wellers, good luck and um. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Keep going, Barry.
Is there a second? Okay.
Let Joe second, bud.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, Joe, okay.
I did second.
All right, everybody getting into it. Um uh Barry has made a motion to adjourn, uh second by Joe. Uh roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Nat.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you all and then see you on Monday. Have a great weekend.
Go well. Go well.